We will go ahead and call our work session to order. Thank you all for joining us this evening. So just to fill everybody in, we are continuing to look at our budget, look at our revenue anticipation note, and to discuss where we are, where we're going, what we expect to have happen, and what our plans are to check in along the way over the next 12 months as we continue down this pathway toward moving through the revenue anticipation notes. So David, I know you've put together a few things for us tonight based on our previous discussions, trying to help us see the big picture of where we are and what is planned in the budget, but also to help us understand monthly how we're going to get there step by step. So if you'll take the floor and help us with that.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Just to take a look back at our meeting last week, very productive. We covered a lot of different things associated with the budget and with expectations as we get into the new year. As you all know, a lot of it's based on how the past year performed. We've got a lot of positive things going that are not all totally included in budget that we're working on trying to get updates on. We'll hopefully have some more of that information as we go along. Did want to catch you up on two things. We're getting $1,300 a month from Wells Fargo for the kiosk down there. That's way less than the building rent and the facility, that kind of thing, from Norfolk Southern for the land. The building is ours, and we lease the property that it sits on. So letting you know with that. We pay $2,000 a month in the tourism rent, and that lease is just a little over a year from now left. I think I said two years, but it's actually a year because it was a five-year deal. It is renewable, and they have to approve any sublets that are in there. So just, those were two things that were questions I just wanted to double back on for you. And then also, other things, we've got some information for you. And with 4th of July and holiday and all, you know, we only had a couple of days. So we're trying to get as much information to you. So we've got some documents we're going to give you now that you can take a look at, take them home. One of them, and I want to make sure that we've got, so we're pulling off Munis information that we have. There are versions of this and some of the material that you have, but we try to get as specific as possible. So you're going to have revenues and expenses is going to be the first document that you're going to get. And this is related to, I'm sorry, expense, yeah, revenues and expenses. This is associated with the projection. It's going to have the department request, manager approved, and council approved. So I think that gives you, somebody asked about that much. So we've got that for you. Tried to get as condensed as possible. It gives you every single line item. Front part of it is the revenue side. You get back to the, oh, they all read. Get back to the red, then you hit the expense side. So let's go ahead and give them that. So we got that one for you. The next document is going to be '21 through '24 projected. And when you're looking at these, remember when you're looking at '24 stuff, it is through May. We're still auditing, finishing up the month of June. Nothing for June. What's in here is not totally correct, totally audited, to be sure. Calista's constantly doing adjustments back from previous month. If something is paid this month and it belongs in June, as you all know with audits, you post it back to the month in which it would be occurring. So we've got that part of it. So you have '21, FY '21, '22, '23, '24 to date, and then '24 projected. So you've got the comparisons there. So you'll have that. And then the last piece is going to be the detail. And this, if you look at your summary, which you all see each month from me, then behind that, you will see all, and Calista jump in if I miss anything. And when you look behind that, you're going to see the revenue, and again, go back to the blue page. Front part of it is the revenue detail, and this is for FY '25. So we moved from '24 stuff up to now with the June projection, and then everything from '25 is your budgeted. Then you hit the blue page, and it gets the detail of expense. And I think that gets the things that you have in mind. This includes kind of your P and L, sort of. Government, we don't have quite the P and L, but that's what this would ultimately end up being. That's the revenue and expense detail. Yeah, the front, the front part of it's going to be revenue. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's no, I'm sorry, there's no covers. We were trying to put stuff together quickly, so. Yeah, so we tried, and there's pencil markings on it, so we were trying to put stuff together. It's no covers, but you have, yeah, the front part of this is revenue. So it's, where's the revenue? It's word revenue is on it somewhere, right here. So the word revenue is going to be right at the top, here in the middle. That's the sheet. This is your summary of everything. And remember, it's just through, just through May. And then the blue sheet is going to hit the expenses, and the expenses, it says in the middle. So I think that's the, that's what we've been able to pull off, the Munis documents that are. Some of it is reflective of things you've already seen, but it's presented in a different way that I hope will be easier or easily formatted, I guess, is what I'm saying. That, yeah, so try, trying every, everything. Thank you, Calista. She's been trying to sort through my gibberish to figure out how we were going to do this, and she found these different ways to present information. So. Is that the one that's got the years?
That's comparison.
That is just through May, as you said.
Correct.
So when it says $5 million, does that include or not include the real estate taxes that were collected? Yeah, we haven't got everything off. Yeah, so that does not include all that, yes. No, no, month of June, just don't count on anything being there. So that's a big month. So it's missing, it's missing $4.4 million because that, well, that's what was billed out, that amount collected.
I was looking at delinquencies as I was going through it, and it almost looked like we were, for just the first five months of the year, more delinquent than we were for all of last year. Does that look accurate to you? I'm looking at it. Hold on. I moved back to the front before I got my question. It was under utilities. Let me see if I can find that again. Late charges, yeah, so just for water sales, late charges, $73,000 just this year alone. And we were at 60 last year, 79 the year before, and 81. But if that's just through the first five months, that's.
Couple of things, well, a couple of thoughts on that.
Page 11.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts on that. Delinquencies, we don't write those back to the year they happened. So once, once you're past a certain, this could be.
Okay.
Somebody paying something from.
Okay.
I don't know, two years.
So it could be cumulative. It doesn't mean all of a sudden we're double the delinquencies that we had before. Okay, that just jumped out at me as I was going through there, but.
Yeah, and remember, two, two years ago, you did do some write-offs. So real estate taxes, you keep for five years. Other stuff are the write-offs, and that was what Janet, the attorney, gave us to do. And some of that got written off. So some of that old, old stuff that you're not seeing in audit anymore is in there. But yeah, the delinquent revenue is, is up. So there were some delinquencies.
Current year actuals under 50145 water sales. The second line, late charges, penalties, interest, those are the delinquencies in that we're at 73,959. I was just looking at the actuals for '23, '22, and '21, being so much closer to that. Does that make sense?
Oh, we got it. We'll take it in a minute.
No, ma'am.
But we just, no, we just, we just gave it out tonight. So everybody's, and I apologize, we just got it together today.
And that's neither here nor there. I just, that jumped out at me when I looked at it. I mean, there's a lot to digest.
Yes, so, so you all got this tonight, so you can look at it before we meet again and, you know, have any questions. If you see something along the way, let me know. We worked on it this morning. It really didn't do any good to get it out earlier, so we just gave it to everybody tonight. Yeah, so, you know, there's a lot there, and then compare it back to some of your other stuff. Numbers are going to, some, be some variation just because of that June for the fiscal year.
Sure.
Everything is current through May. The June is still being caught up. And then just remember that we've got those couple of things like our AP bill that would get credited back to May and the June bill. So those, those are things that aren't in there that we've got to credit back. So that's generally, Calista, can you think of anything else with the reports? I think from our notes, we got everything that you all kind of had in the list.
So if I'm reading through this correctly, just going from the first page, page one, looking at general property taxes, since that's one of our biggest numbers, we were at $9 million three years ago, 9.6 two years ago, 10.3 last year, which would likely mean we'd be somewhere around 10.3, 10.5 current year, once that's all figured out. But the budget for the current year is 12.3, correct? That's with the new rates and the new assessment.
12.3, that sounds like all tax.
I think it's 12.5, and that's for all, right, on page 85? Is that the key?
Page, page one of the document.
That's this one, right?
Yep. Top, top section, 10011, general property taxes. Just, and it is all, it's real estate and other taxes, but just looking at the comparison, where we're a couple million bucks up compared to last year and what would likely end up being this current year, once we get that.
Actually, I'm going to get to that. I'm going to try to go back through some of the slides from the budget. So we build out $4.4 million in June. That was the new tax rate, and that included some of the new development. Most of the new development stuff will come on, so you add that 2%. We were conservative, so not everything is, is on there. So if you, if we build out 4.4 times two, you know, you're talking about 8.8. And then 2% on top of that gets you, I mean, we're almost, the build-out is almost the number we're working with. So we're really, really, really close.
To 9.1.
Right, without the additional, we've had 2% growth, and we probably don't have more than that because the townhomes and things like that are actually.
Right.
Valued higher than we originally went in. We have not added up what all those were. Teton Crest happened after budget, so we only, the things that we knew were the, shoot, it escapes my mind. What's, the development on Rock Road, Golden Crescent, what is the name of it?
Teton, Teton Crescent.
No, Teton is the one that's in Forest Park.
Are you thinking of Golden Triangle?
Golden Triangle.
Yeah, Golden Triangle.
All those townhomes, we tried to, there was a few that came, have come in after the fact. So when you're getting the reports of the economic development stuff, not all of that has been included because we didn't know going in. I don't.
Gotcha.
Be overly positive and put a lot of, you know, we try to make the numbers as close to what they can be as possible.
I'm just trying to simplify a little bit as I'm going through this, and again, this is just the first blush. I see about $2 million more from that first paragraph, for lack of a better term, that first section. And then I see $1.3 million more or so, up to potentially $2 million from the other local taxes. That's in, that's above where we were the last year. So when I'm looking at 10011 and 10012, I'm seeing those increases. So that's giving me about 3.5 right there, additional that we'll have.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that helps because that helps us as we're getting towards the 4 million.
When you're looking at the RAN and what you're looking at.
I get it.
With the revenue is then take off what, and not every single, and this is the thing I was trying to make point of last time, is not every single expense has been cut in this because we were still cutting when we did the budget. And when you're looking at '24 numbers, we were already into '24 when we had to go get the RAN in August, September.
But other than electric sales for the most part, we're relatively level other than a few smaller items, budget year to budget year, correct?
Surprisingly enough, yes, we're doing it.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. That's where I'm seeing from a revenue-only, just looking at that, I'm seeing, you know, almost three and a half million dollars of potential additional monies. Because one of the big conversations I think we've all had is where is $4 million going to come from at the end of the calendar year to pay off the RAN? And then what money will we have at the end of the year, looking at that? Well, that helps me see, you know, three and a half million dollars right there, which is a lot closer than some of the numbers we had talked about of one and a half, 2 million, and trying to say, where do we make that leap to get to 4 million altogether?
I did some quick, quick numbers today, just going through, looking with, if, with the RAN paid off, and if we're able to pay it off in segments through the year and not be faced with the $4 million all of a sudden at the end of the year, because we don't want to take all of our revenue at the end of June, and, you know, we want to be able to carry over. Once the RAN's paid off through the course of the year, we should conservatively, it looks like somewhere around a million or so, million, two, we would carry into FY '26. It's not a lot, but it's better than.
It's better than being behind, right.
$1,000. I've been looking at general fund stuff.
And so just to ask a couple of questions with that, you know, obviously, timing is everything, and when the money is available has been an issue for us on how we get there.
Timing is, yes, I have, yes.
And that as we go through this, we will hopefully not have to do anything additional to bring in additional money, borrowing or anything along that line between now and the time we get our next big payment in December.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay. And then when we get to next summer. Okay. And then when we get to next summer. Uh, right, yeah, not, don't want another loan.
Off the existing RAN, we're working on that now, and when that happens, we will close on the new RAN. The new RAN's got till the thirtieth of July or something like that.
And then when we do that, again, just beginning some of these discussions with these numbers, because there's a lot to go through. But just looking at that, I see, you know, again, a good chunk toward the way, as I'm looking through some of this, that helps me feel better that we're going to get to the four million dollars. It's what we have, like you said, that one million, one point five, two million, whatever that looks like, starting next year. If we do that, is that enough to start the year with a comfort level to say, we're going to be okay for the beginning of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six?
Better than the past two, and that's conservative. It may be more, but I, I just want to make sure that our number is.
And that's with the budget, as was established this spring, that we voted on and passed?
Well, and, and some additional correction, you know, that.
Right.
It's not everything, that's what I was saying, it's not everything.
Right.
That's in the budget, because we have gone from there to the next steps. So Calista's looking at every purchase order, every appropriation, every expense that comes in. Every Tuesday, we're looking at every expense, every appropriation, every dispersment, to be sure that, that we're not, we don't have something that's off kilter, something that's not in our plan. And if it's something we don't need, we'll hold off on it. The things that we're working on, those very few improvements, we want to make sure turbidity meters, like I sent you today at the water treatment plant, things that we've got to have to keep the, and, you know, third to three hundred dollar investment for each of those turbid, turbid, turbid beaters, that was actually in the budget.
Turbidity, say that three times fast.
So, so some things that we're seeing come in, while they look like they're new, they're actually not because they were budgeted two years ago, but because of the supply chain issues.
Yeah.
Have, have, we've been dealing, and then we've tried to put off some things that, you know, if somebody's asking twenty, thirty, forty percent more than the, we know the value of something is, if we don't need it, we're trying to use, can't do so much of that with inventory that we don't necessarily need. We, we've got to keep transformers, so like, part of that's one of the biggest things, transformers, seventy thousand bucks.
Just had that yesterday afternoon, yep.
Pieces of those, so, uh, you know, looking at all the things that you could possibly do, we're just hoping for a smooth and steady through the year. You know, whether like July fourth, I'm holding my breath, making sure we're not getting ready to have a duration. And we hold my breath through the spring, I mean, through the winter, ice storms, you know, we just don't, don't want to have anything big hit us during this time period while we're getting this, the RAN paid off, and we're trying to build some funds back into the reserve accounts.
And, and I do think that that's something we have to keep in mind, too, is that if something happens, that could throw this whole trajectory off. One question I was gonna ask, too.
Or if, if something happened, well, let's say, I mean, lots of stuff is going on right now, you know, and who knows what a presidential election's going to cause, uh, things like that. So however that work, you know, whatever impacts that could have happen, we don't know what, what they may ultimately, you know, inflation will go up, will go down, will interest rates go up, go down, will building slow, building slow down some, we've seen that already, while people are waiting to see what's going to occur. We try to make the best projection we can, but you never know when folks hardship might happen, and they're not, you know, not able to keep up. You know, we may have more delinquencies than they're able to pay. So those are the kinds of things we're trying to keep in mind, keep our citizens in mind as we're going forward, and keep the level of services, as I've mentioned before in budget, we've kept the level of services there. We are looking at, and I've talked to all the department heads since our meeting, uh, trying to look at, and these are my departments, looking at the bigger things, you know, what, what, what efficiencies can we have? And that's going to take me a little longer to get, I hope to be able to have you more answers there. We've already tried to incorporate as many of those efficiencies as we possibly can, you know, trying to, you know, double up when crews are going out, you know, take one truck instead of two, things like that, um, still keeping service levels. We were dealing, fourth of July, we had special event, four power outages that I can recall. Uh, we had public safety issues, uh, several of those, fire, I, I mean, nearly every department was, and that was all in the course of the day. You can't, you can't write a book on this, some of this stuff, it just happens. But still, we were able to pull off all the things that were required of public safety, all the things that, that were necessary to make a, a special event special in our community and keep it safe and do the kind of things that we're doing. We are looking at other things. I think somebody had asked me about ticketing, uh, we do, and that's concerts. We do five dollars cover charge, looking at what ten, you know, does that cut your, you know, if you, if you cut your crowd in half, it really doesn't do you much good. I did not do the revenue side of some of our tourism types of things. You know, I'm sure y'all get this, you know, how, you know, cities trying to cut, and you know, you've got July fourth. Well, the fireworks are donated, uh, we do have some, uh, sponsors, and, you know, we have reasonably priced bands. We put on a really big deal for less than twenty-five thousand dollars, I think it is. Don't quote me on that, I gotta double check it, but is that the number you remember from the, from Rec Commission?
Yeah.
And that doesn't, so, you know, it's a fifty thousand dollar event, but, you know, it's only costing us twenty to do it, and it's for our families.
Right.
I heard, thank you.
I did.
Yep, very good.
Get the water fountain fixed at the.
The, the old one is out now.
And it's got a doggy sitting at the bottom of it.
Great.
Hey, David, tell me if I'm looking at this wrong. When I look at it, and I know it's through May, we've had eighty-six point two percent of our revenue collected. Our expenses are at eighty-four point four. So if you turn to the, to the page, I guess eighteen, the total remaining projected reven, revenues at ten point seven. And then if you go to eighty-five, uh, page eighty-five, the total expenses, it looks like that are still expected, are, are twelve point five. Doing rough math on that, that kind of leaves us close to six hundred in the hole. Am I looking at that wrong for the overall? Looking. Yeah, I'm on page, let's see.
Which one are you on? Which, which, are you on this? No, you're on, okay. So we're on this document here.
And so I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at the, the total of everything, and it looks like the total revenue still to come is that ten point seven projected. And then I know the blue indicates that we switch over to the expenses. So I went back to the very last page of eighty-five, and it says twelve point five, almost twelve point six. So, and I, and I was looking up at our percentages, where we have eighty-six percent of our revenue and then eighty-four, so.
Okay, some of that's going to be, um, and I don't know how to try to do this differently. Some of that is encumbrances from the previous year, because, you know, we carry it, like you're doing one tonight.
Right.
So you're recognizing the expense from last year, but you have to carry it into the current year from the past year. So some of that isn't, that's, that's what that difference is.
But that's not a current, it's not an expense. It is. You have more money because that has not been paid.
Okay. So that would come off that twelve point five?
Yeah, so it wouldn't take us into the hole.
Okay, okay.
And I, and I hate, I hate we're doing this through May, because I know it throws it a little bit off.
Right.
Having May instead of, you know, full month of June.
Yeah, but, but it's helpful, I mean, it'd take a long time to digest it, but go ahead.
Does that mean some, but sitting somewhere being held, or that's sitting?
Should be restricted, right?
It's, we used to estimate the million dollars.
Right, the encumbrances.
Where is it if it's not counted in the revenue?
I know it's, where's it at? And you, I, I mean, if you, we're asking questions that are really detailed, so it's okay.
What the encumbrances are, I'm just not remembering right offhand. One of them, one of the bigger encumbrances is that fire truck.
Well, it's okay if you don't know what they are exactly, but in general, where are the encumbrances?
Right, Calista, correct me if I'm wrong.
Where is that money sitting? Is it in the general fund? Is it held in the restricted fund? Is it?
Right, so it will follow the year in which it occurs. So like in the million dollars, I think that fire truck is in there, isn't it, or the ambulance? And I think ambulance, because we did, in the, in the fire truck, the big one in that.
I'm not so much worried about the detail, just tell me how, generally, how that, you know, we said we have a million fifty in encumbrances. Tell me how encumbrances work, just so everybody, for the public, can understand.
Will you make sure your mic is on?
Yeah, my microphone is on.
Year to year to year, when you have encumbrances, and we've been as high as, uh, I set my lights on. Okay. So from year to year to year, when we have an, an encumbrance, and we've been, one of the things we, we've had is we've had high encumbrances of three million dollars. We've been trying to get those down, try to get the expenses in the year in which they occur. So the ones that drift off, like if the, and I have to check, if the fire truck is in that, we bought it two years ago, and it, it will follow it for three more years until the truck is built. So the expense is not until three years from now.
Okay.
So it's not, it, it's not in this budget year, even though it's an encumbrance and has to show up, because it's still.
We don't need to spend that this year?
Correct, it's going, it's going to go.
Bill that we're, know that we have to pay, but it's not going to be spent this, in this fiscal.
Correct. So anything that we've had to order.
Yes.
If it was, let's just say, I don't know, let's say it's ten thousand dollars was, was spent this month. We did something, it's not going to come in next year, it's going to be the, so that expense will carry over into the next year, even though we're not spending it in the next year, it'll go into the next year and the next year, until the expense actually shows up with the purchase order.
But that one million and some change is in that twelve point five. So you would need to take it out, to Seth's point, to get the actual real.
Yeah, that'll come out, correct.
Okay.
And that's, that's done in, when we do audit and all.
So that, that number should actually be eleven five.
But that million is accounted for, it's, it's restricted, and it will be spent just at a later time.
It's going to be at a later date in that budget, whenever it is, three years down the road. I think Fire Truck's got three more years on it. They're, they're now talking about it being later, did I explain that right?
I guess that's what he's trying to say, is that, to your point, the numbers aren't off as much as what.
Right, because that would put us close to six hundred.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Yeah, so, so tonight.
Is that money counted in the revenue number?
So tonight's one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars you're dealing with, it's a smaller number encumbrance. It's stuff that happened from the current year that, that will carry in, but goes, it, it, it's going, it's going into the current year, from the previous year.
But it's coming out of our cash this year.
It won't come out of our cash until three-year, depending on what, until it's paid.
The one season that you were talking about, we were doing this year, is an encumbrance for some prior year.
It's for the, is that what twenty-four?
But the cash to pay for it is coming out of this year's budget, correct?
Cur, for tw, it's, the one you're doing tonight is for FY twenty-three.
Yes.
So it goes back, almost all the conferences usually go back a year. So you won't do the one for current year until sometime after December.
But it's cash that's coming out of this year's pot of money, right?
Yeah, it's whenever you get the goods and the services.
Okay. So is this.
It's a placeholder for the money. It's not new money spent.
Is this one million that we're not spending right now that's encumbrance? Is that counted in our general fund, restricted fund? Where is that? Where does encumbrance money sit?
Yeah.
Until we spend it?
Yeah, it's going to sit in the fund in which it occurs. So like a fire truck would be in the fire fund.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm getting you now. So, yeah, whatever it is, while we're talking about a total number, it will be in the fund in which it occurs. So if it's public safety, it would be in the public safety restricted fund, or it would be in the.
But it's in the restricted fund of whatever.
Yeah, because it's got to be for that specific, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's restricted, so it can't just be like spent, okay, that was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My ultimate goal of trying to get there.
Yeah, if it's already been done, then we will have been accounting for it all along.
Okay.
And then you all are just saying that, yes, put it back, it was your accounting.
Okay.
Requirement for our finding, for our audit, to put it back in that current year.
Got it.
So, yes.
So if you want to know specifically what makes it specific, you can look at that.
Oh, good, then put your name.
What page is that?
Um, you can look at any other pages right now.
Oh, there's an encumbrance fund on each of the sections, gotcha.
So you can see every department and what they have encumbered.
Okay, great.
So that will make it specific. So if you want to, you can see every single line item that would happen.
And generally speaking, Calista, correct me if I'm wrong, I would say most are, are usually associated with a grant, uh, that we're trying to get either finished up or whatever. So it's already.
What's the max out for these encumbrances? I mean, are these ten years out, or is this generally two?
The only, the only, there's only a couple that I could think of. The fire truck is the biggest one that's several, it was either two years or three years out, because you have to order so early. That's, that's what we were saying about that, that ambulance we were looking at. It would be, it would be listed as an encumbrance, but it would be in the out year, whenever it was, and I don't remember what it was, if that was a two-year builder or three. So if it's been something that's going to be further out, and I'm trying to think whether, I don't think we've got anything in electric substations. I'm trying to think of the different departments that would have some, the fire truck just sticks in my mind. Sometimes during COVID, it was police cars and things like that. So when you look back at that historical data, some of it is probably going to be driven by equipment, most likely, because you could not buy any equipment in twenty, in twenty-one.
Okay.
Most stuff didn't start coming out until twenty-three to twenty-four. Right, Jerry? And then when most of our police cars started rolling in, that's one I'm trying to think of. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
I'm trying to answer on the fly, so I'm.
No, 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 that's fine. I just wanted to.
If I'm not clear.
Everybody get here, the general path of encumbrance funds, including myself.
So take a look at those, it's a lot of information. Compare that back. You've got the budget book, and the budget book still, and the other piece of it that, I feel like I'm echoing, um, the other piece of the budget book that you haven't gotten yet, so I know when, when you asked me this, I realized we're behind on it, I've got it done, is the written budget book. I know a lot of y'all use that. It has the description of all the areas in it, it has the, uh, the layouts of revenues and expenses, and then it has those summaries. It's done, uh, we're finishing up a couple of charts in there, and it's ready to go to the printer. So I'm hoping that you all will have that by the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, it'd be great if we could.
And that's, that's just kind of a simple version of the, the more complicated budget book that has the forty-eight hundred line items. Then the book that you get from me, that has kind of the history and the economy, and, uh, each section then has got.
That is very helpful.
We spend a lot of time with the write-ups on that.
I think the other thing that would be helpful, at least for me.
And that'll be put on.
To help explain to other people, if in that you could include where we're identifying over the course of the year, that extra four million dollars to pay off the RAN, that's always the big question, is, you know, we know what we projected as expenses, we know what we've projected as our revenue, how do we get that extra four million dollars to pay that off completely? And then we end up with whatever that million, million and a half, two million, whatever that end year number is, to get us going for the next fiscal year. I think that would be helpful for all of us to be able to say, this is where we projected. We think we're going to have an extra two million dollars from, uh, real estate, tools, machinery, you know, all those kinds of real property taxes. We think we're going to have an extra, uh, you know, half a million dollars in water. We think we're going to have an extra million dollars, two million dollars in electric, and that's where we think we'll be able to identify that margin to say, over the course of twelve months, we're going to have the four million dollars to pay that off, and then we're going to go from there. I mean, that's something I think that I need.
If all things go well, and, and we're, what we're going to try to do is, cover your ears, Calista, we're going to try to do that to give you a better idea monthly, because what happens is, just take June, you have four point four million dollars billed out, you have two point two million dollars in electric revenue billed out, you have, okay, so I add that up, it's, uh, five, four and a half, five and a half, six and a half. Then you have all the other stuff that puts us like seven million dollars. So you're, you're up here, and then you get those expenses out, and it drops in. And then you go through a month, like July, that you just don't have that much coming in. You got your utility revenue, and then you bump back up again about every quarter. So it's doing this all the time. And that's where it's this trough, and going into that trough that's causing this concern with the cash flow. And then as you build back up, and then the revenue comes back in again, you're able to catch back up and go back through the process.
But I think identifying.
The secret is to be able to get ahead so that the revenue, that, that the, that we, we have the expense trailing the revenue instead of the other way around.
And I think, too.
And we're not late on anything. The AEP bill's the only thing we're, we got to catch back up on, but everybody else is, is paid and current. We've got the, um, debt service in a week or so, uh, we've got, uh, the, uh, revenue coming in for billing. We're hoping to catch the AEP bills up this month, but everything, everything else is current. I'm not, there might be one or two little things that were late. They were, they were sent to us late, but other than that, they're paid. So anybody saying we haven't paid anything, I, I don't know where that would be.
And I do think it'd be prudent for us to prepare for worst-case scenario.
Today, God willing, the Greeks don't run.
You know, worst-case scenario, I think we'd all rather, rather be pleasantly surprised with the projections beat expectations, because if there is something left over, we, we've all, I think, said that we'd like to build our reserves, and that would be a great problem to have. But I just, um, as we, between now and then.
I agree. I'd rather be depressed for a year and know that I'm going to be pleasantly surprised when you get into, you know, maybe the second, end of, middle of the second quarter, and start saying, well, gosh, these are looking pretty, pretty good across the board.
Right. But you're starting that, you're doing that already with your department heads, trying to find those efficiencies, trying to find any way we can stack some additional, uh, expense cuts in here, contingencies, things like that, holding off of being. contingencies, things like that, holding off of things until we get further in the budget year to see where we go.
Kudos to the departments, they are head and shoulders following us on this. They, they're great, they're keeping from spending something they don't need. They're fixing a water line break, doing it the right way, they're fixing the road, doing it the right way, but, you know, holding back on anything extra if we don't need something. So some of the equipment that was still in the budget, we've been holding, held off on ordering that. I think it was a truck, trailer, ice freezing, pipe freezing machine, and I can't remember what the other thing was. A tractor, yeah, so we held off on all those. They can do, as long as we can keep the service going. Somebody asked me about leaf collection program. We get enough revenue with the VDOT not to really change that out. I think that it's something, in a city, it's, where do you go with your leaves? It's hard to bag them up, we've got a lot of older folks. I think it would be a service that would be tough to, to get rid of. It may be something to look at, looking at our sanitation routes, I think there is efficient. We've got the larger trucks, we can pack them as tight as we can, and make two runs to the landfill each day rather than, you know, doing three or four, you know, so that, so we do condense those down as much as possible. What else did I look at? Rec fees, looking at the staffing at the rec department, Greg's looking at that. We do have some, somebody, I don't remember who asked that, the safety, making sure safety issues, because if somebody's making a copy of somebody's card to go in, we don't want to. We had some experience with this during COVID, if y'all recall, we, you had to buzz in. So each person came in, showed their card, and then went on in, and the next person came in. So we're, we're trying to keep from having that, so we can still be as efficient as possible. Trying to double up on what folks are doing at that front desk, if they, if they can run the sweeper down the hallway, or check the weight room, make sure the, the weights are there, that kind of thing. So we're trying to make sure that we've got as much of that as possible. We hire our park aides during the busy time, we needed everybody during July 4th, and as we get into August, those, some of those will start dropping back off again, and we'll have some of the winter part-time folks. So we're looking at those efficiencies as well. Library is almost totally run on the part-time staff. We're always open to volunteers, volunteers are tough to, to always have there to run the operation, but if they, if they're volunteers that can do, are interested, send them our way. We're always interested in taking those folks on, Elizabeth.
I think that probably the areas that could benefit from that, maybe they should send something out and see, I mean, because the library has an extensive, what am I trying to say, social presence. So, I mean, they, they do really good about pushing things out, and other people share and post. I mean, that's an example of, you know.
Yeah, I know Jenny sits on the board, I know they do as much as they can to try to recruit folks to help even the library board members volunteer. Something I don't think we mentioned last, maybe you brought it up, was ACE, and, you know, every student, we have four, I see, I think 80, 40 in each of the, of the two years that they can go to, go to the university. Jesse's at 160 hours, does that sound right?
Yeah, I think that's close, yeah.
So we get them for areas that they're interested in. So they may come down and work at the fire department, helping wash trucks, and help, you know, set up some of their emergency kits, things like that, if they're interested in something. And hopefully, that interest will then cause them to either be volunteers later in life, or come back and be, in either in their community or our community, become something for our department. So we try to get them in the right stuff. We've got several right now that are interested in, I think we've got two in horticulture, isn't it, David? That, that, I think Nick said, we're helping him out this summer. So trying to get as much efficiency as possible, still looking at that part of it, that's going to be ongoing. But all the departments are keeping costs down, all departments are working at getting the most efficient levels that they can, things that we don't need. We won't just wholesale drop a service. If it's something where you think could be changed, we'll let you guys know before it changes to make sure that it's something you, you know, we look at it a different way. You may see something or know somebody that wants to do something slightly different. So we're trying to get as many different things out there as possible. So what's not in your budget is the ongoing things that continue to happen, because the, the budget, we just, we just hold back. So if you see, I don't know, $2,000 in travel, for instance, and we don't need that travel, we're trying to make sure that travel is, is used for, if they need a certification. You all have heard that with the treasurer's office, you've heard it with the commissioner of revenues office, fire police, if they need certifications, those are the kind of things we'll do. We don't want to just be going to and attend, you know, a gathering of whatever if we don't have to. And so many of those things now have moved online, and if we're able to do, we get the online option for a Google meets or something like that, we usually do that. So there's going to be some places you're going to see nothing has, has been spent in the past year, and that's just because we held back, because folks didn't need it.
And is that something that you could almost kind of condense, and maybe just for us, what a, and calculate that into what a 3% cut across the board, 5, 8, 10, in case that, that's a road that had to be go, to go down, what that would be? And I don't know exactly how you'd do it, and we can talk further about it, but, you know, that way, if next COVID, next week, you know, and we're, we're back at square one, and we're not revisiting this, we kind of have a plan in place for percentage-wise, for something for us to look at.
Yes, so, as you know, we have the 4% that we've saved on the salary-related items, so that's already in there. We've gone through and looked at other things. The problem with, so, so we took, remember we, the original budget had 4%, so that was taken back out. So that's now, that's in this. So you're going to see, when you see the 4%, that's the savings there. And then when you're looking at, when you're looking at most of the budgets, as you can see, it's, it's going to be modest travel, modest office supplies, modest, what's the other things that's in there? I'm trying to think, down at the bottom, the list is office expense, furniture, all those things. There's just not a lot of big items, so when you're talking about doing like a 3%, it might be 100 bucks in somebody's budget when you.
Right.
Take the line item, so you've got to look at the bigger things. And then there's all those fixed items that we can't take out, and that's the social services programs. But what social services does, I mean, Keith and them are fantastic about making that application and trying to make sure that they're matching every dollar that they can in the existing budget, and making sure that, that the service is provided. Probably that's the, doing this now for 15 years, I would say that's probably the most challenging part of what we do, because they can't say, and we can't say, I don't think CPMT or DSS, you just don't know. It only takes one CP, CP, CM, whatever. CP, CMPT, yeah. Case, and you can, it can cost you a million dollars, and that you don't budget for. We try to do the best we can on those, some of it's state reimbursed, and some of it's not, so.
And that's really hit us hard the last couple of years. We've had several cases that have been up there in the hundreds of thousands, if not more.
Why, when we talk about the, the opiate money that we have coming in for those settlements, that, that 5%, even if it's 5% that we're able to recoup and not invest in something specific, it would be nice to use that, at least temporarily, to help buffer some of those expenses that we're seeing that are really, they're rising at an exponential rate. All of the, the programs that we affiliate and associate with, they've all sent out new contracts, everything is more expensive. So not only is the demand for services growing, but those services are costing more and more. So, I, you know, I've got to grapple through all of this to really feel like I can, I can speak with some sense on it, but when I was kind of reflecting on our last meeting, and some of the things that I'd like to see is, you know, a lot of our programs, I would like to see them become more self-sufficient, again, at least for now. So for instance, the concert series. In the past, I know we've been very heavy with sponsors. You know, I, I would like to see more sponsorship being looked at, because it's advertising, and to have, that's a good way to pay for some things that in the past, I know that has worked. We probably should focus on that a little bit.
Kim and I did talk about that from the last meeting, so she's going to look at the sponsorships. The, one of the hard things about tourism, just to expand a little bit more, as with several things that we do in economic development, it's hard to put a number on who has spent $5 over here, maybe gotten something from ABC, or from one of the vendors, and then ends up going to Brick House, or to, you know, it's that, we want that extra, we're actually after that. You're bringing people to Radford, yes, to have some entertainment, but we really want them here, if they're on the river, floating with Paul, or if they're at our concert, or if they're at any other special event, whether it's recreational tourism. We're hoping, and we're trying to figure out a way that we can better measure, what's, because you can see from our number, our meal sales lodging stuff continues to go up, and for those to go up, that means they're coming from somewhere, you know, is that coming from outside? And anytime you can see those numbers going up, it means we're hoping that people that, it's not our folks that are, that are spending the money, but somebody that's coming into your community that's spending the money.
And I think it'd be nice if, I mean, I don't see it's one or the other. I mean, I think that we, we should absolutely be able to reap the benefits of bringing more people in, but if we are paying for the event, and it's coming out of our budget, then how far ahead at the end of the day, by the time we recoup taxes, are we? I would still like to see some of the things that we do be more self-sufficient. So another, you know, let me be unpopular again, but, you know, our rec center is free. We, should we consider finding a way to make sure that that's self-sufficient? Do we charge every household $5 a month, as an example? I know the mayor and I talked about that. Just how do we get some of these programs to be more self-sufficient?
David and I were having a conversation about this the other day. Do you know how many of our peer communities are charging? I know Christiansburg, I think, they definitely have a fee for the Aquatic Center. I don't know about the Rec Center.
Aquatic Center has a fee.
And what about Blacksburg?
I, I think, let me check, I don't want to say and be wrong about that, but we did raise the non-resident fee to $125, does that sound right, Seth?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because I'm trying to come off the top of my head. When the Rec Center was built in 20, 20.
20 years ago.
Yeah, 20 years ago, 2002. When it was built, taxpayer money built it, so they felt like everybody that, if you own property in Radford, you should be able to go up there and use.
And I love that philosophy, except for it, it's 20 years of costing to maintain and to run. And I'll be honest, I mean, I, other communities around us, what they do may not fit for us, because they have other, other, you know, areas to draw revenue from. And so, again, it's just one of those things, like I mentioned, when you manage at home, you have to look at some, some of these things that you can trim back a little bit. And, and I'm, I'm hopeful that at some point, we can revisit some of this. But as of right now, you know, I think that we need to try to be as self-sufficient in these things as we possibly can.
Yeah, just the operation of the Rec Center alone, I think that's the one that, the electric's about $85,000. So, you know, when you look at those expenses for just that facility alone, you're right, I mean, it's been 20 years, and you've still got ongoing, you know, replacement of your HVAC, repairs to HVAC, plus the actual use of electricity.
Right, the roof.
Yeah.
The roof, can I pause you for one quick second? Because we were having a conversation earlier today, and David, if you would let everybody know what you were telling me about our enterprise funds, and how they do, and how they impact the city, would you just talk a little bit about the revenue they generate, and, and, you know, to your point of self-sufficiency?
Right, so, so the enterprise funds, water, sewer, electric, and sanitation, they are self-supporting, and we do a good job with those. They all do well, we don't have to transfer anything from general fund to them. The health of the electric department is solely because of that big transfer, that $4 million transfer plus over to the general fund. And that, remember back during the budget presentation, we talked about all the different pieces of that budget, but when you look back at what occurs, the, the non-taxable, which is about 50%, we have 1 point, almost 1.2 billion dollars in valuation of our taxable, and then there's, there's half that amount that is non-taxable. When you divide that out, almost the amount that we're carrying over from the electric department to support, because everybody pays an electric bill to support the general fund, if you didn't have that transfer, the health of your electric department goes up, you know, exponentially. So that's one of the things to look at, you know, as we're going down the road, we've got to fix the general fund, you just don't have that. What you see, when you look at the, there's just not that many places for the general fund to bring in revenue. You've got your state revenue that supports the social services programs. We have just a few things like 599 funding, things like that, that support the public safety side. But when you look at $4 million police department, $2.5 million fire department, you look at the social services aspect, which is 10-ish million dollars. Schools is eight, with debt service and everything. You quickly, you quickly go to just a few big items, and you're at your $30 million, which is what your general fund is. So when that, when you're looking at the taxes, those, those at the top, those big ones, like in the first two gaps there, other than maybe communications tax, it may be a couple of pages, more pages over, it's a half million dollars, most everything else is service-driven. You've got some revenues that come in from that, but your big numbers are, are based on your taxes. So what you've got to look at is what we provide as a city, and how that compares to, you know, if somebody's a town, you know, they're, they're paying the same amount of money, but they don't have school system, or they don't have those extra things. So what is that comfortable number for us long-term, and looking at sustainability, what is that number for us to still be a, a good place to live, reasonably priced, give all the services that we have, knowing our boundaries are limited to 9.63 square miles? We have the two revenue sharing agreements, which are great, and as those grow, they continue to bring in more money. But all those pieces together, how that ends up working, it's the general fund that we've got to focus on. The others are probably, I mean, we're still probably one of the lowest, I think we are the lowest, I'm trying to think back through the exhibits that we had, you know, at $22 for sanitation, you know, we're, we're getting a good deal for that, and what we provide, it could easily be 24. We didn't go up on water, but, you know, the water system, we treat our own water and do it very, very efficiently. We've replaced a lot of water lines, but you're going to have to start looking at the sewer side down the road in stormwater, and you've got to look at those rates. We did go up a little bit on the sanitary sewer, but that was mostly because of Pepper's Ferry going up. And then the electric side, I think the electric, it just, we're trying to follow what customer usage is, making sure that we stay under what the AEP costs are, and then making sure that we're, we're keeping up with that wholesale power cost. Whether or not that changes in two years, in 2026, when the new power contract comes online, you know, we're looking at what's out there that can be subcontracted part of our undershoring, and that's wind, water, solar, you know, how much of those kind of things going to, going to, gas, how much of those going to be able to help in mitigating, you know, those worries about transmission and those extra taxes and things that come in through PJM and things like that. So all those pieces together, I think the enterprise funds are healthy and can easily be healthy. We've just got to get the general fund piece of it, and as we all know, none of the expenses are going to come down. And, you know, you keep a quality school system, we know the high school's going to need some stuff going down the road, and, you know, it's going to be a few years, we've got to start thinking about what that is, get past the bonds that we've got now, before you start looking at another bond for the school side of things. So that's kind of where your focus is, you know, whether you start thinking about it now and say, well, you know, we don't want to go down the road and have all of a sudden a 10 cent tax increase, you know, if you want to do a couple cents here, three cents, you know, just look at what is systematic. Because we had looked at, I think, right at, as we were going into COVID, and y'all correct me, we were looking at just trying to do a couple cents a year, I think, was the number. And that would get us in 10 years, make everything sustainable. Nobody likes taxes, I don't like them either, so, you know, figuring out how that works. But the services that you get for those, those taxes are, are, are big. You know, one of the things that's a little different from us is we've got kind of that upside-down bill. We've got a lot, you know, we've got the younger families over here, then we've got all the, you know, the university students, ones that don't have families, and then you've got the older folks. Everybody on that, everybody's making those payments, and those older folks are making those payments to help support our schools, but it's going back to, you know, the, the children and the, and the families that are there. So you've just got small percentages, everybody's paying for the small percentages of things that make everything go.
So David, let me ask you this, you know, big, big picture, when, when we look at this too, it is bigger than just finding enough to pay off this 4 million. We need to be looking at sustainability.
Absolutely, yeah, 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 this 4 million, if nothing else has happened in this $4 million, it's opened our eyes to something that probably would have happened in a few more years, that just, it, it, everything came together at one time with COVID, inflation, all these costs, things that we needed to do, extra repairs. We've continued to try to keep up. continued to try to keep up with maintenance on the system. Because if you let the system go, then you've got millions of dollars' worth of things down the road. So yes, you're absolutely right. You've got to look at that $4 million is just going to help us, getting that taken care of, but looking and make sure we don't, if we ever have a problem down the road, we want to be in a position where we've got, you know, five, six, seven million dollars, you know, our, our estimate, I think $7 million is what we'd like to have back in reserves.
Well, not, yeah, that's, that was, you know.
For emergencies and things like that.
Big picture, we were, as we were talking earlier, even, even if we did come up with a 3.5 and we're down, you know, have to find up that $500,000 long-term, you know, we're not where we want to be right now. And we, I think, for a healthy city, we, like you said, I think we need five to 10 million dollars in reserves. And the sooner the better. It's not going to happen overnight.
Four to six would be great. It would keep us comfortable. But seven would be nice if we could get to seven.
Are we aggressively looking, and I know it's painful, and, and I know that, you know, when you start digging too much into these, you're talking jobs and things like that, but setting aside because I am fearful that we're one catastrophic event away from really being in a hole. What, what would kind of be the plan for that? On just worst-case scenario, two months, we, you know, we're, we're in something that is a million, $2 million fix?
Well, if it's, if it's weather-related, you've got FEMA backup. And that, I'm always looking at the expense, but you, you do get 80, if you remember the last time we feel 84% of that money back, plus whatever other grants, contributions, things like that that come out of it. So any kind of time of disaster, that's why, and we haven't had to do one for a while, but that's why if it's, if it's worrisome, we'll get you all to do a, I'll do a declaration and you all come in behind me and support that so that if the governor or the president declares an emergency, you're able to get that money back. So that takes care of that piece of it. If it's, I hope that we're not, we're looking at all of our equipment and things to try to stay ahead. So hopefully, you're not going to be faced with $100,000, I've jinxed it for sure, but $100,000 item or something like that. Most everything on that emergency side, I think, is going to be covered. The other things would have to...
Or infrastructure or something.
Yeah, most things we would have to be planning to get into an infrastructure deal. And with, with the size of our community, it's going to be hard to do these days, pay as you go. So if you had, well, let's use this as an example. So, you know, for now, we've got, you know, a five, six, seven-year deal with the facility at the fire department. Fire department's going to have to be renovated. That renovation that we thought was going to be $2.5 million, all this was right at COVID, ended up being $5 million. Well, probably by the time we get to it, it's going to be $8 million. So that's going to have to be bonded. You just can't pay cash to make that go. And you put it over a longer period of time to make that work out. Same thing we're looking at with equipment, like fire trucks and things. If they've got a 10-year life, you might as well, if you can get a good interest rate on it, you might as well run them out at least five years on an, on an interest plan.
Right.
Can I answer your question?
I think, not to put words in your mouth, but I, I think, are you asking the question, are we overstaffed? Are we overbuilt for a community of our size and resources? Is that what you're kind of getting to? Or what, 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 because I mean, the, the challenge is you either cut or you add. There's really no in-between. Hopefully, we grow the economy with West Radford Commerce Park improving East and West Main Street, you know, building out at the Food City area and some other spaces throughout the city, and really make, take advantage, which is something we've been working on for years. But that's slow. And that doesn't get us there immediately.
Well, the other, kind of related to that and then build, continuing to build on, I'm just trying to think as I'm going along. So catch me on call, I'm trying to remember as many things as I can to tell you all. The other piece of all of that can be consolidation of services. It may be that, like in the case of, I hate to even say anything, because then I'm going to have employees call me tomorrow and say, you said yesterday to me. So let's just say it's a, I don't know, something in the enterprise area. Well, let's just use water plant. I mean, that's a, a good example. So, you know, we built our water plant, 8 million gallons of water, and we're processing about three. So we've got plenty of capacity. So we now, you know, have an arrangement with Pulaski County, they're buying water. We're sitting pretty if somebody needs to buy more water. We've, that was built that way because when the foundry was in operation, they were using 5 million gallons of water. And then when they closed, well, they started recycling and that amount was cut in half. And then they ended up closing. And, and of course, we don't use but what we have now, which is nearly at three, and that includes washout. And it, it approaches three and a half with washout and everything. So if for some reason, you know, we could, we could somehow join in with Montgomery County or something like that, or what it's called the New River Water Authority, you know, to, to sell them some of our water or be a part of that. We wouldn't get rid of our plant, but be able to be a part of what their development is, then that's what makes that piece of it go. Or, and, and I think we've got probably the appropriate size recreational facilities, based on the usage that I see, the recreational facilities and library. But that's another thing, you know, can you, can you help consolidate? Our libraries do a great job of working together. If one's open on Friday night and the other one's not, you send people to Christiansburg, Blacksburg, wherever. So, you know, those consolidation or tie-ins of services is also another area that you can look at.
That's a good point.
But I think our hours, and we're, that's the other thing we're looking at now, you know, are we, are we staying open until 8 o'clock to accommodate? And it's going to make those three or four people mad.
Probably.
Yeah, you may have to choose another time to go in. But, you know, looking at what we're having to do, because then you've got the staffing, you've got the, you don't save a lot on electricity because you're still having to keep the building minimally warmed or cooled. But, you know, looking at those efficiencies, you know, are we staying open extra hours and really don't need it? Because we just don't have but a few patrons. And trying to watch that with the seasons. We did cut back this year. The rec department's open less during the summer months because we've got people, we want them to be outdoors more. So we'll be looking at that as we go into the, the winter months. A lot of it too is driven on the number of basketball teams and indoor, and now the pickleball. I mean, the pickleballers are coming in at...
Six, seven o'clock?
Yeah, as I was saying, are they that early? I was going to say, they're there at seven, so they may be coming at six. So they're coming in extra early. So that's now new staffing. So we're, everybody's looking at that piece of it. You know, if we, if we don't need to be open those extra hours, I mean, minimally, it still saves you money on not having to have somebody front man the building.
And the biggest thing long-term is creating more revenue generators and, and, you know, the, that's why the West Radford Commerce Park is so important. And the industrial park and filling those up and things like that. I mean, that's what's going to move the needle, but they don't happen overnight. So, you know, making it work until then too, without just relying on, on tax increase after tax increase. But inevitably, you know, we'll have to increase taxes, but...
Absolutely. You know, I think that the investments that have been made along the way, your investment in the West Radford Commerce Park is going to generate the jobs. It's something, we, we haven't had 80 acres of property to, to sell in, I mean, for a long, long time. So it's been since the first industrial park and then a couple little side things that we've done on the Cole Morgan property out at Rock Road and the Moog property that, that we've been able to add to. But those have been more than a decade ago. So, you know, in, in recent decade and a half, we haven't been able to have those investments. Plus the other things like ARC that's going to invest in our downtown. The reason we're not moving that forward is because the cost of lighting and some of those materials is so high right now. We want to make sure that the prices come down, if they're going to come down. I, I don't know. I haven't seen a lot of inflation over the years come down. But let's hope that that might, would be able to happen. A more aggressive market where your bidding is going to be good. But then also because some of those ARC grants, and this one in particular, you have to front, front it and then get reimbursed. And I just haven't wanted the cash flow issue. So we've been holding off. It's not that we can't do it, but we're holding off on it. Let's get a little further along. Let's get, you know, some of this rand paid down. Let's move some of these other things. We've got time before we have to worry about ARC being an issue. And we've got both of the one in the park, which has got some other environmental things we're working on there associated with archaeology. And then the one on East Main Street. So I think the investments that you've got grants for, and we're always looking for grants, but the investments that you've got out there, I think are going to generate jobs and, and, and the other thing is, you know, look at, I mean, look at the dentist office, you know, that's going to increase the value of that. They're going to use that entire building. They're going to have surgical units. They're going to have a lot of other services in that building. It's taking an old building and making a really nice reuse out of it. That's going to, going to be much, much better investment in our community. And that's going to generate other things down, down the street.
I want to circle back just for some specifics. So what I'm really interested in is understanding what it would cost for some of these departments to be, or like the Rec Center. What would it cost to the taxpayer to be self-sufficient? What would that look like? What kind of increase? And I also believe that there's monies that should be earmarked. If that's what we're raising the money for, if that's what they're taxed for, I think it should say, this is the money, and that money needs to be earmarked to go the Rec Center.
I think we looked at $25 a, it would go out in the electric bill. It was $25 per bill. There's 5,400, I had my calculator, is it my calculator? I carried my phone, thought it was the calculator.
I mean, and you can get this too, you know, you don't have to come up with it now.
Thinking about numbers on the fly. It was $25 a month, I think, was the number we were looking at, times the 5,400 bills. So that gave you the revenue on the electric, on the Rec Center side. I did not look at anything for the library at this point.
Out of curiosity.
And this has been a little while back, so I don't know whether that is competitive with others or not.
Yeah. And, and out of curiosity, I, I think, you know, maybe next time we, we do discuss the hours of the library, that we all sit down and we, we hear what those hours are looking like. And then also, if that entity was to be self-sufficient, what would that look like as another option? What would that look like? Just some basic things. Obviously, you know, no, no meals for anyone paid by the city, including us, and I'm starving. So I think that that should be across the board. The city's not. We're not paying for meals. I, I want a real plan on this tourism building and the Wells Fargo building to be leased. I want an aggressive strategy because not only could that be bringing in money just to pay for those buildings, but also it's, it's indicators for other businesses, other possible tax revenue, and another opportunity for a business that our community can enjoy. So I would really, what do we need to do to look at getting those leased and starting a heavy recruitment for that?
Kim and I have talked about that. We're going to be advertising Wells Fargo building and trying to get somebody in there. And probably the rent on that, probably $1,500 a month, something like that.
Do you typically use LoopNet? What, what platform do you, do you guys do for, on a city basis for advertising?
We'll probably just put it out on the city Facebook page. And, you know, it should be picked up by some of the, and we've got several contacts with real estate market folks and pay them a small percentage if they bring somebody our way. Could be that somebody calls, Kim, and just says, hey, I need, we had a lot of these right at COVID and before COVID. We haven't had as many renter prospects lately. But, you know, most of them have already gone into facilities that are in the community already.
I wanted to pass along to you at a different time that we'd like to talk to Kim.
Yeah, we do have a couple of other, there's some, there's some good projects out there that we're keeping our fingers crossed are going to go forward.
Yeah.
So the tourism building, you know, we have a little over a year on that. And I know that that seems to be a little controversial, but I still feel very strongly that the hours we're able to keep it open really are not conducive to, to the people that are here visiting and the timeframes that they're typically here visiting. So, you know, of course, this was something to discuss, but I would love to see that leased out for that remainder of the year as well.
We're trying to see if we can do any kind of team up with the university tourism and recreation program. See if we can get them to help us staff it.
Okay, that would be good.
Not only with helping with the marketing piece of it, but helping us with the sales of items in the store there.
So the tourism building, we have the Wells Fargo building. We're going to look at leasing, doing some collaborative measures. Obviously, no meals paid by the city. We're going to examine the library hours also, self-sufficiency, what that would look like. The Rec Center, we're going to evaluate the hours and also what it would be we're thinking to be self-sufficient. If we can just, if that's the number that you, you know, had come up with some time ago, if we can just kind of do a current evaluation of that.
We'll see what our, we'll see what our neighbors are doing too.
Yeah.
Because you want to stay competitive.
And I think we may have some of that. What was Blacksburg?
Blacksburg does like a permit, I just pressed out, but I just, Blacksburg does a visit fee, so like 50 visits or $65 one visit.
So they do theirs, all kind of like a membership you get.
And that's just for fitness center. I don't even pull up their products center because I don't feel like that's...
Yeah.
Well, and I feel like the trouble with that for us is managing that. We don't need to hire three more people to manage that. So it would need to be something that goes out across the board.
Just to know what universe we're in, though.
Right. But I'm, I'm still saying, and also, we have to decide what's good, you know, at the end of the day for us. And I don't see hiring someone to try to manage that. That's sort of like the bus.
You could sort of just put the fees like, like Christiansburg doesn't have a resident fee, but they have their non-resident fees. And they have a chart on their website that says like recharge on a 175 dollars for a single person a year. I mean, you just put that online and then, I mean, if we're doing like a normal fee, if it's being filled out and not letting it go, that's...
Line item breaking down.
And just to, just to go, and I think we will look at all those, but just to, looking back, Jerry reminded me of, I'll put you on the spot. You know, even something as small, like we've, we've done, we've been doing some transports to the jail. And we're billing the jail for that. It was only $176, but still, that costs us to do that transport. That when they can't come to us to pick them up, we've got that expense if we've got officers going up there. So we're trying that out to, to see what happens there. So everybody's looking at, I mean, like $176 is going to make a difference. But, you know, it may add up and it does show we're trying to do it.
Right. And so let me get, you're right. So I want to bring those up. So the concert series, again, I'm all about self-sufficiency. I would like that to be, figure out if, if it's finding more sponsors to keep the price down so we still have the number of people. I mean, I think that's, we've done that in the past and it's worked. And I think that we, we can't go backwards. I mean, if we had sponsorships, we'd go back to those sponsors and put that effort back in to make sure that, you know, they're self-sufficient.
And we are doing, I didn't mention it, but we are doing those sponsorships with the rec department. Gosh, there's a lot of them on the, there's a lot of them on the pickleball courts now. They're starting to show up. It's, it's a good deal in your advertising.
And so again, I'm looking at the extras, the leaf collection. How much extra does that cost us? What would it be if we spread it out? And that's something in those months that, that maybe we distribute. So we're, we're paying towards it. These are extras. These are things that we do that go above and beyond, that we want to keep, but they have to be paid for. Our recycle and dump site, what would that look like? And again, I'm not suggesting we do all those things and all those things at once. But I think we need to look at those numbers to see what it looks like if they were to truly be self-sufficient. What does that look like for us?
And I think you gave us the numbers per day, but what, going from an open five days a week to three days a week? You, you've told us that previously, but I can't remember how much this cost us.
Right, evaluate hours.
Yeah.
Right. Like, like in any of these things.
I think it was $5,000, $4,800 a day or something like that, I think.
Yeah. So to just, just evaluate each of these things independently. And let us look at that, whether it's hours, staffing, you know, what it would cost to be self-sufficient in particular. You know, even the simple things like our mowing. If we're mowing, the mayor and I talked about this, there, there was an area that was mowed and it had been mowed not too long ago. It probably could have gone a few more days. Or maybe instead of saying, oh, every week or every five days, we're doing that, maybe we evaluate it and say, okay, now we're, this, it can go seven days this time, you know? So just little things. But all these things together, to me, create a bigger, a bigger picture for us. And these are not fun things. But I think it's not always going to be fun for us up here for a while. So.
So before we break for just a minute, for our next meeting, and we get to have another one of these in just about two weeks, so, or three weeks, we really wanted to look at that, that chart that you're trying to put together for us that shows the peaks and the valleys and all of that, to show where over the next, at that point, it'll be 11 months to get to the payoff and then what reserves we have for next year, to show us where we think that margin will be, to be able to say, okay, you know, July's a quiet month, so there's not much there. September is a big month in getting, you know, a lot of additional revenue. This is where we think we can find some margin. December's a big month, you know, whatever that looks like, so that we've got that. Is there anything else somebody else wants to see as part of that, so that as we go through that meeting, we feel like we've answered our questions? I know there's been several, you know, questions asked this evening, but is there anything else we need for that? Yes, Bobby?
Yeah, I've just got, just got a couple of things I want to add. First and foremost, I just want to make sure that we're doing all the cuts that we can. The biggest concern I have, are we doing enough? And we don't, we really don't know. We, we're not going to know until we get further down the road. I realize that. That's the biggest concern I have. Number two, like, you know, like she was saying about mowing, you know, just cutting the, cutting the overtime back. Like you said, you know, if you go a week without mowing, it's no big deal. You pick it up the, the following week or whatever. Every little thing that we can do. Number three, the, the meters that we got, there are 10,000 for three meters, correct? And we got to get six more, right? My question is, I know that was a recommendation, could, could we... that was a recommendation, could, could we have delayed that and looked at it again down the road, or?
We're trying, that's the reason we're scattering them out over a period of time, as long as they stay within price. It's a health department requirement.
Oh, it is.
Yeah. So I don't want to do anything to call, we, we get gold award and we, you know, we make sure our water's the best. So we're trying to look if we can move two, three of those into the next fiscal year, we'll try to do that. So the ones we got now were actually ordered, just unless you remember, I can't remember now, four months ago, five months, they were ordered a while back. No, actually, it was a long time, long ago than that, because we talked about it in the fall of last year. It's taken less long for them to come.
And the last thing I got, once again, just, I think we need a B plan, maybe even a C plan, that we can implement, everything that, that way we were prepared for it. If it does get worse and we need to make a move to do that, I think I would rather be prepared and do that and make more cuts. What do we have to do than keep on getting back together, try to figure things out? I'm just saying, be prepared for the worst and hope for the best. And I mean, that's, that's what we need to do. And once we get through this, then, you know, I want to get outside and, you know, and have fun. So that's it.
Does anybody else have anything else for our next meeting?
No.
All right. So we're going to meet on this on July 29th, and it is going to be a continuous thing that will add to the agenda as we go through. So hopefully, it won't be a lot of special meetings, but we'll have it on our regular agenda, just to check in each month and see where we are and what we're looking at. There's a lot to digest, so if everybody will take a look at your documents and see if we have any questions. I think the goal would be to get David as many of the questions as possible, as early as possible, so that he can turn that into actionable things for us, where possible, for our July 29th meeting. And then, you know, look at this chart and see where we go. I think everybody's working really hard on it. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all the hard work that you've done. And we're going to try to get to an even better place. With that, we're going to take a seven-minute recess, and we'll get back together at 7 o'clock.